Regular city council meeting. Can I have the rolls all the way?
Uh, Todd is not here. Mallory?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Starling?
Here.
Edwin?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Ormski?
Here.
Okay, please stand, join me in the question. I would like to lose this to reply. United States of America. And it's very important for us to say yes. On this issue. On this call. If there is so. First and just as well. Thank you. Okay, I will open public comments for agenda items only. Yeah, so I'd stand and state your name.
Uh, David Holmer. And this is regarding, uh, general business nine D. Uh, planning commission appointments. I just wanted to thank you for consideration. And let you know that I'm here for any further questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll speak to nine C, please. Public appearance statement, then. You can include the minutes tonight. Try to get through this. My name is Scott Wayne, probably. Better soon you up here. I'm a full time resident of Wayne Riverside Drive. I appreciate the opportunity to address you, address you tonight. Thank you for your recent discipline. To deny the resulting their plus. However, I believe it's time to bring this back to the file. Think given through the strict enforcement of our existing ordinances. The law is clear. Chapter one twenty city ordinance explicitly restricts short term vacation rules. Through R two, R M T one B four. It excludes R one zones like ours. Right? You're not included in that. This isn't complicated. Our one zoning exists to protect single family neighborhood. No short term rules, no exceptions. That's the law. Mr. How Horowitz's property at one seventy Riverside Drive is zoned out. Making short term rentals illegal, full stop. He never qualified for a license on his section one twenty dot O three. And I'm familiar with all of these. And no amount of people were out.
This is the nine C.
Yes, it is freedom, yes. I thought I'll just step right into it. Please allow me just a few minutes.
All right.
Okay? In fact, I'll, I'll just, I'll just go right straight to it. The distractions. Distraction tactics must end. Well, I appreciate the city has shown some leniency in the enforcement of the ongoing. In enforcement, the ongoing FOIA appeals and procedural delays are not about transparency. They're stalling tactics, tactics. They're designed to undermine legitimate enforcement. The recent series of FOIA appeals demonstrates this adven clearly. Challenging the credibility of city enforcement through technical disputes over documentation. Questioning the existence of records that city officials have publicly referenced. And demanding explanations for every procedural detail. These appeals are consuming valuable city time, resources and staff time. That should be focused on enforcement, not endless paperwork disputes. The pattern is clear, create confusion, demand documentation. Then appeal when the responses don't meet unrealistic expectations. We spent months organizing in the neighborhood and defending the zoning ordinance that is already law. The delay of the ZDA hearing to June eighteenth is the latest example of his protracted process. That unfairly burdens the law abiding homeowners and creates unnecessary strain on city resources. It's time for final action. It's not a matter of personal grievance. It's not about maintaining trust. It's about, it's about maintaining trust in the city's ordinance. Ensuring they are applied equally and consistent. The city, city has already issued a cease and desist order. And the zoning code, code is unambiguous. I respectfully ask the city council to respect the content. Reject these contingent distraction tactic. Move beyond leniency, the strict enforcement. And uphold the integrity of the R one zoning protection. Bring this matter to a final conclusion. Our commitment, my neighborhood, this is our neighborhood, our homes, heart, peace and quiet. When someone tries to turn a residential street into a commercial venture through illegal rentals. They should know exactly what's waiting for them.
Just, just last statements, just your three minutes is if, uh.
Say that, I'm sorry.
Your, your three minutes is also if you can just.
Oh, okay, I got it. Ten seconds.
Okay.
Okay. Where was I at? Our peace and quiet, when someone tries to turn a residential street or a commercial venture through illegal rentals. They should know exactly what's waiting for them. A united community, a city that enforces its laws and a council that doesn't flinch. The next time this issue comes before you, I urge you to hold the line. Protect the R one zoning and homeowners who trusted in these protections when they invested in our community. Thank you for your time. We're standing with the residents of our Riverside Drive and all R one neighborhoods.
Thank you.
My apologies, Mr. Warren, I didn't know where you were going.
Well, I know. And I have a tendency to be worried and I try to write things down to make it concise. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on agenda items only? I will propose this section of public comments. And move on to approval of agenda and receiving filed all communications.
Someone?
Okay. Seconds.
Do you have a question?
Okay.
Um. On the approval of agenda. And receiving file all communications, uh, council and Bedman moved to remove agenda items. He moved to table the agenda items. Both of them.
Are we on the agenda or the minutes? We are, uh, we.
That last time you did.
We are on the agenda right now. So, we'll get to that one just a minute.
Okay. Get your bill list.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have a motion by councilwoman Mills, second by councilwoman Bedman to approve the amended agenda and receive a file of communications. Comments? Questions? Okay, all in favor? All right. Opposed? Motion passed. Number six, approval of prior meeting minutes, regular city council meeting minutes from May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I'd like to make the motion to approve the prior minutes from the council meeting minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion by councilwoman Martin, second by councilwoman Darlene. To approve regular city council meeting minutes of May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Have presented any comments? Okay, thank you.
Through all the agenda received by all communications, the order to move should be tabled. If you mentioned the move, you can't talk about it again. So, table that.
I wrote it in the exact way that he said it, because he said to remove the agenda items. Whatever number that may have been. And then move it to the next council meeting. And then you had mentioned table and then he said to tie us. Was that the right verbiage for that? So, if you'd like me to change this table, I can.
Yes, please. Is that small enough actually?
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we need to change the motion for that?
To amend?
Yes. Okay, that is, I'll change my motion. If the amendment by changing the word, remove to table. All right. Good with that? Good, all right. I have, uh. Motion on the table. All in favor? All right. Opposed? Both in advance. Okay, number seven. Uh, we have the department's boards and commissions. We have police and fire department report for the month of May. Do we want to ask any questions or comment on that?
I would like to thank the chief and the officers who came to the children's trail on Saturday. Um, for the event we had there. Your presence is always welcome.
Yeah? Okay. I will move on to number eight. Bills and disbursements for the month of May twenty twenty five.
I make the motion to approve bills and disbursements for the May twenty twenty five in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy ones. Dollars, one hundred and forty one, nine, ninety six.
Yeah. Second that motion. I have a motion by councilwoman Mills, second by councilwoman Martin to approve the bills and dispersments for the month of May twenty twenty five. As stated. Any questions on those?
I have questions.
Okay.
Um. Again, I see length and latency on. The bills three eight zero two eight. Why are we continuing to use somebody and pay for somebody that is no longer employed? By this city?
As I said, the, and last time we paid bill, the time we paid bills before that, the time we paid bills before that. Um, anytime we have a project that's been ongoing, uh, we retain Stephen to help finish that. Because, for example, if we were going to do something with Inverness, uh, on the water and sewer issues out there. Um, I would have to probably pay ten or fifteen thousand dollars to catch a new attorney up to speed. Uh, so I will continue to use Stephen on various things in order to help us close out ongoing issues.
Good, any other questions?
How many is somebody that's not employed by?
He's never been employed. He's all employed.
He's a. I'll find out faster.
I have the authority to spend up to twenty thousand dollars without approval of council. Thank you.
Um, what was on three eight zero three five? What was the one thousand five hundred and twenty dollars? That was actually paid to our attorneys Cummings, McLaury Davis and Echo. What was that for?
Uh, you know what? I don't know who's been a good bit of money through them. I would assume that particular one, based on the timeframe. Uh, would have been questions we had about freedom of information. Um, also regarding some zoning practices.
So, you don't know instead, what money was spent?
Well, I do. There's a bill that has probably my signature on it somewhere, but no, I can't remember. If he builds a two hundred dollars an hour, what he did for six hours for us.
Why isn't that information available to council? It is, that's not something that he can remember every single thing that he do. That's something he can look into and get them.
Yeah, one of the things too is sometimes the legal bills are also, would have to be redacted before they did go out. Um, because sometimes those bills may even, and that one, I don't think is. We also use them for criminal cases. We also use them for personnel issues and that. Uh, so sometimes we would have to redact information if we gave you bills. So, most cities do not hand out the legal bills of their attorneys.
Sure. Okay, any other questions on these?
Um, three eight zero seven sixty nine financial credit card charges.
Which one was it?
E L. Financial.
Yeah, no, it's got a name to see those. Three, what was it?
Zero seven six.
Twenty dollars. Uh, that's, that's our credit card bill for all departments. Um, it could range from charges made on Amazon to charges that. The lumberyard, uh, whatever it may be. So, yes, that you would get a credit card bill. And that's the sum total of all the things that were spent on that credit card.
Um, what is the E after one, three, two, six E for two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars and forty six? That's your record.
Yeah, uh, what are you looking at?
Towards the last part, it has an E after it.
E after what?
One, three, two, six E.
Oh. Is that the first page?
What page? Start, let's start with page, what page are you on?
First page, right before three, seven, ninety, seventy eight. Or right after it, I'm saying.
Oh. Page one.
Right.
Yeah.
What was the number?
Well, the first form.
Number two, six.
There's a couple other E's.
From.
The other E land. My.
Okay, stands for electronic.
Electronic.
Yeah, that, that means it was paid via electronic and no physical check was issued. Sorry. Who's looking for it?
I'm gonna ask you at the last meeting if Sarah Swanberg. Was assistant treasurer, you told me now, but she is listed. As assistant treasurer on the website.
Does this have anything to do with bills and dispersments?
Yeah, I'd like to know if we have a treasurer and an assistant, which is the treasurer.
This has nothing to do with bills and dispersments. Um. Okay, any other questions on these?
And so I mentioned, oh, you're gonna do it. Okay, good. Sorry.
And I vote for approval. Your, um, I would abstain from. The numbers three, seven, nine, ninety two. It's a circle old community market. Okay, and that's my grandson's estate in that one. Yes? Okay? I have a girl, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Ormski?
Yes.
But F A D on. Starling?
Do you know?
Mallory?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I just wanted to make one mention. Uh, there's, uh. Out here, you see a number of meters that were installed. Um, just to give you guys an update, we're, uh, since you guys passed and we brought out the money, got the money and everything else like that. We've installed over a hundred meters so far out of the fifteen hundred. Uh, within, uh, what has it been, a month?
Right.
And a little bit of change, so.
Okay.
All right, I just want to let you guys know that. So, that was one of the notes I had on the bills, so.
Great. All right. Um, number nine, A, we have consideration to place six month. The delinquent water sewer utility bills as liens on the twenty twenty five star tax. Now, we'd like to make the motion to consider six months open water sewer utility bill as lean on the twenty twenty five tax. Okay?
Second.
I have a motion by councilman Martin, second by councilwoman Mills. To prove placing six month length of water sewer utility bills and liens. On the twenty twenty five summer tax rule and direct the city assesses spread these amounts against properties. Okay? Uh, Mr. Spalsky, I've seen.
I, I think one of the interesting things, we did get some criticism from the public. Uh, because we're not following a, the ordinance to a T. But I think you guys realized when we came to you, we said, look, what we're gonna do is instead of going and putting stuff on their taxes right away. We're gonna give, what we're gonna do is we're gonna do a second mailing. So, anybody who didn't pay, uh, water and sewer bill, let's mail them another one. And by doing that, I think we dropped from, and again, I don't have the number off the top of my head. I think maybe Casey did put it in. We were at like one fifty or one sixty. That we would have had to put on people's taxes. But by resetting that out, we then dropped that down and we, we probably collected about two thirds of that money, I believe. Um, so there, there's a, a thing that we changed. Because we're like, okay, if it goes on their taxes, their speeds, there's, you know, there's, there's all kinds of things. Let's see if we send a friendly reminder out, hey, pay it over, we're gonna put it on. Uh, so this year's is quite a bit less than it has been in the past. Yeah, it's like, uh, fifty four thousand, I think like one fifty or one seventy, uh, before. So, we picked up about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we were able to collect on it after the Sesa residents.
Sesa, we can make a residence.
Um, it is already on our list of ordinances to revise. We've been picking them off little by little. We're gonna change that in there because I, I think we gotta give people that chance to say, hey, look. Because sometimes people forget, sometimes they're struggling, but if that little bit of extra time that we gave them and it wasn't much, it made a huge difference.
It sounds like you would have that going.
Yes.
Any other questions I have? I do have one question, such a general question. How does it, I mean, how does one of the water bills from the seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollar?
Give me a minute, because see here. Casey is thorough as she is, she put notes on my sheet for me so that I can answer actually that question in the middle. Yep, had a leak, never repaired, um, Doc sent multiple letters requesting, never response. Um, so they do have a leak, it's, they're aware of the leak, but they, they just don't seem to want to do something about it. Yes. Well, you'd be surprised, a little trickle of water, how much that adds up over an entire year.
Sure. And a homeowner knows about this.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mallory?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Starling?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ormski?
Yes.
Okay. Nine D. We have consideration of recommended twenty twenty five property tax mileage rates. For the bonds and city operation requirements as outlined in L four zero two nine. One.
I'll make the motion to approve the recommended property tax mileage rates for the bonds and operation requirements as presented. Yeah, I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion by councilman Bedman, second by councilman Martin, as stated. Do we have any questions on that?
It's like everything was.
Something huge every year.
Every year.
Okay. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, sir.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Starling?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ormski?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Mallory?
Yes. Number nine, C, Freedom of Information Act appeal. We just have session, not action on this.
Um. There's a lot to read there. And, uh. The thing about Freedom of Information Act is. People have to let us know either specifically what records are exist. Or description of. Like what it is so we can find it. And then, of course, it has to actually exist. And so after I read through all of it, the only thing that I was curious about was he may mention that. In the initial FOIA, he was given an email, but not the attachment. Did he end up getting the attachment?
Yes, the attachment was given to him, uh, originally. Um, but I don't think he realized he had it because it was redacted. Um, it just showed attachment and we redacted any names, addresses, phone numbers out of that. So, yes, he already had that particular document.
I mean, it is a little confusing because it is in an email chain. So, there are the chained emails and then the attachment that was in that chained email was worth again. Or it's, it's, it's the one that stated July forty eighth.
So, it wasn't. In the FOIA response, but prior to right now, did you tell him he already has it?
No, we have not told him he already has it. I, just because it was in the appeal and that does have to be addressed by the council, the appeal itself. So, we can, of course, let him know.
Right, we, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's that. Were any other documents found? Through the initial search team?
No.
Okay. The FOIA information I have found says we have no reason to. To accrue this appeal. Are still worth it.
There's also a, um. A statement made on one of the appeals here that, uh, an email had attachment and the attachment was not within the packet. Um. Packets don't always have. Everything that we get because we get the email in our inbox. And when we, uh. When we approve the agenda files, we see all communications, that's part of it.
Anyone else have any?
Either denied or approved or modifications.
Or partially approved.
All right, so we should, we should take some actions. Right?
I think you have to, so you know, we have to send him a form.
And.
Of what your decision is and your, your reason, so we need to have.
Okay. Right, so, um, so he's received all the documents in our possession that he requested.
Yeah.
Okay, this. I make a motion to deny his appeal because he has received all the documents he has requested.
And let me, let me be careful, it's more than an appeal, it was. He appealed two.
Appeal.
So, we have the dates.
Have you said we have six appeals?
Six total appeal, one came, then one was regarding one set of FOIA and the other one. So, please give the dates of the two FOIA requests.
So, the first FOIA request, um. Was from April. Twenty ninth, it was brought in person and then received on the thirtieth. One was sent via email and I'm. Trying to remember the dates here, I have them written down, I'm just trying to remember them. Email to me on the thirtieth, received technically the next day, May first. And then the first day counting towards. The FOIA five day or fifteen day with the ten day business extension or ten business extension would be May second. Um, so, but Mr. Horowitz has put them on for April twenty ninth and April thirtieth. So, the April twenty ninth FOIA and then April thirtieth. Should we address each one of these appeals individually? For the record?
I think you can say, well, you could say on this appeal and there's, how many did he have pertaining to that?
And so I've got two in that here that says. Appeal number one. Yes, so.
And says.
Yeah, so this first appeal, appeal number one is for, they request on April thirtieth. Um. And it was all cease and desist letters. And then, so that's his one FOIA. Or Mr. Horowitz's first, I think this might actually his second FOIA. And then the one that has multiple appeals connected with it is his, um. Uh, first, technically his first one that was received, um, or dated April.
Very.
All right, so, so one is April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. And that one, he had.
All.
Count five.
Five appeals.
Five appeals.
Okay.
Then for his one on the April thirtieth, he had one appeal. Okay? So, if you separate and say, hey, I'm going to look at April twenty ninth. And it, and, and include all five, the five appeals. Then you can vote on that. Then do April thirtieth and say that, however you want to do it. But separate them out and make, and make sure we have the dates in there, please.
So, it should say something like if they're. I think it's, um. Oh, five for April twenty ninth.
From the FOIA dated April twenty ninth.
Okay. So, we need to revise the motion I have for.
Yeah.
You want to withdraw your motion, M?
Sure, sure, I withdraw my motion.
So, I move that we deny the FOIA request on April twenty ninth. Twenty twenty five is comprised of five appeals.
I second that.
You denied the appeal on the FOIA from April twenty ninth, correct?
Requested FOIA. That's.
Yep.
What it says.
The appeal for the FOIA from April twenty ninth. Good. Make sure that we're repeating.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask for a roll call on that one.
Okay. Uh, Mills?
Yes.
Starling?
I'm not sure. I don't really understand all of this, it's so. Since I don't understand it, I'm voting no.
Mallory?
Yes.
Ormski?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes. Okay.
So, I'll make a motion. To. Deny the FOIA request to appeal number one. And only one. Dated April twenty twenty five. This one has her with, uh, cease and desist letters.
And I'll second that motion.
And some discussion. That's right. Mary. To help me out here. The, the purpose of FOIA appeal is if someone knows we have a document for some reason or another, we help undo it. They bring it to our attention so we can decide on it. In this instance, we just. We don't have the documents, because he, he believes documents exist, you know, as he says throughout here, like. Well, this conversation happened, therefore there must be a document. There's not. And so we have not been able to turn over it, that's why we.
Roll call that, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Starling?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ormski?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to nine D, planning commission appointments. I believe we have three people put in applications, David Palmer, Scott Loring, and Michael O'Brien, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the both of these terms will expire, um I'm sorry, I had it uh May fifth, they expire May fifth, twenty twenty-five, so they will expire May fifth of twenty twenty-eight. Oh, uh sure.
Okay.
I'd like to see us walk around in discussion, so I guess I'll make a motion, I'd like to see us read those for this and table it and um so that we can have uh an interview per se, we quietly, uh only individuals and right now we've got some real important stuff and he's planning that has to be and perhaps we need, I would like the opportunity to have possibly your candidates.
I see, okay.
I'll second that table.
Okay, I have the motion on the floor. That table, is there any discussion down in some head?
You know, how long are we thinking of this new proceeding or being opened? Two weeks?
Hold on, let let me do, I gotta run some math. If we do it for two weeks, okay, we should probably hit the next council meeting. Right? And then at the end of the month is the next, she's looking on planning commission, I know you are right now.
Twenty-third.
Okay, so we should be good.
No, the next council meeting should be twenty-fourth. Day after that.
So if we want to do it an extra week, we can do it an extra week and then did everything against it all. Right now we have nothing going for that planning commission, you have to know.
Well, no, just sending a chair, vice chair, secretary-
Okay, so that's it's not, yeah, it's not that important, okay, so we're good.
I would also like to see the uh the table of who's on the planning issues, is nothing on the website, nothing, I can't find anything anywhere. So I need to know everybody that's hourly doing when their terms expire.
Alex said something today.
Yeah, we'll double check that. We'll double check the dates on everything, make sure they're all accurate for you.
Um may I make a comment? One of the applications had absolutely no information on it except the name.
Right.
Um there there were no references, there were no qualifications whatsoever. So how can we vote on something with no information about the person?
It's hard to determine, we gotta be-
And I'll make a comment, I'm actually happy to have so much interest in this specific term. It's nice to see.
So let me ask a question, I need you guys, this is open discussion, so if we post it, we get it in, you guys want to interview the people, we we want to do like we do when we interview uh candidates for council, is that what you would like?
Can we have a work session?
We could have a work session and do that and maybe I think that ask uh maybe a member or two from the planning commission to join us that in that uh interview, I think that would be a great process to do.
This doesn't necessarily set a precedent.
I think for the planning commission and BZA and things like that, if possible, and you got multiple candidates, I think you should try to see if you can get some input, I mean, they don't make the decision, if you have planning commission, they're they're they'll give you their thoughts and ideas.
Yeah, thanks.
But they don't get the vote, like the rest-
I'll make the charter, you make recommendations, we vote it off the ground.
Yeah, I think it would have been nice to have planned this earlier so we could vote on this tonight, but I I I see I see what one got.
You can always do a special movement, yes.
Good.
It's not good, when I am a gentleman, especially me.
Okay. We can discuss that. See if I can set that up or something, but um if any other comments on this right now? Okay, roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Ormski? Darling?
Yes.
Mallory?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
See both ways, just finishing. Okay. We're at nine E, short-term rental vacation home slash free vacation home rental fee and fines.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Edwin, second by Councilman Martin to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Any comments or questions on that?
Again, the fine is is for the, among its twenty fifty dollars to get the paperwork that we need, they need to um that's for the-
Do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, two hundred, it's two hundred fifty dollar of application fee and then every year after that, it's two hundred fifty dollars. Um we got a code, we'll have a code enforcement person um that'll go and make sure everything's good, handle any issues that may arise. And then if somebody is doing something, say the the short-term rental's too noisy, too crazy, um we'll issue them a warning saying, hey, look, stop, here's some of the issues we have. Um they don't, uh then then there's a fine of five hundred dollars. A third time, they get fined of five hundred bucks and then they could lose their um lose their license. Uh so it gives us a little teeth to deal with uh some of this, some of these issues that we may have in the future with these these types of properties.
Okay, any questions on that?
Um can I think a lot of these that um people are using, I know I've heard that because these are um becoming quite frequent, that is it's um there are less homes available to rent because of that, so
there are certain areas that that are, they're not allowed to do that, but that they have in the past and and this-
For example, I can, I do have a meeting, I believe tomorrow or Thursday uh with a uh attorney to discuss obviously redoing our chapter one twenty. Um and this gentleman wrote the ordinance is for Harbor Springs, I think either Pratas or Charlevoix, one of the other two there, uh so I have a meeting with him to look at the ordinance. Uh some people have gone so far, uh Mary, along your train of thought is where they've actually restricted the number of short-term rentals that are allowed in the city. And so you have to apply for a license and uh you know, if somebody else wants to start it and there's twenty-five and that's all that's allowed, you're not allowed to start it. Um so they are doing that in order to preserve um and prevent people from converting apartments to nightly rentals or small houses into nightly rentals and taking them out of the housing market. Uh so there's a lot of things that we're we're looking at doing with that new ordinance. Um so I'll, when I get a a draft from uh the attorney, I will forward that to you, so that's forthcoming too.
So potentially by uh if it comes to pass by scaling down short-term rentals, we can have more housing available for people that live there.
Yes. Um like where I was, you know, prior to coming here, any apartment, any small house, they were converted, why rent to somebody for a thousand a month when you can get four hundred dollars a night? I mean, it was a no-brainer. And that's what started to happen and so a lot of your workforce housing was disappearing quickly because of that trend. Um so and I know that's what's happened in Charlevoix and and some of the other areas, so um again, I we're we're going to be working with a expert in the region that does that um here in the next uh you know, few days, I'll be meeting with them to do that.
Do we have any idea of how many we will cap that or is that-
I I don't even, I I I would say no because of the fact that we don't know how many exist. Um we'll have to do some research to figure out, okay, what's our level, you know? I believe some of them are actually, like you said, some towns are twenty-five or fifty and then towns that are smaller than ours, so.
Alright, I would say it's really significant that we we hardly get this because uh in what the convention tonight, we've got about fifty percent rental in our city. And um them people renting are lower uh being able to pay. And so if this happens here, it's people that come to bid and out. And it's a while.
Okay, any other comments on this?
I would make a suggestion, Mary, um all you have to do is go on Airbnb and you can see how much, how much for it, it would be surprising.
Airbnb app, online?
Yes, we settled it, not what I was saying, so just check it out. And a little certain or not, it's all supposed to be, right, and some some are in areas they are allowed, some are not.
Why are, why would you be allowed in certain areas but not over areas, that would be so easy, because of this, so you're-
So when you touch attention, boy, then you also get a lot of properties that are in the city. A majority of them aren't in the city when you start checking out your system.
Calling, calling instead of discussion um similar to what we're discussing this morning. And a very issue was planning commission, why is it wanted to open it up for agricultural and forest areas designated areas? And uh this same kind of discussion was taken up and uh they turned it down about a quiet hall of four or three. Till it's close, oh.
Alright, I'll ask for a roll call on this one.
Mallory?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Darling?
Yes.
Edwin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ormski?
Yes.
Okay. Confused, number nine F, consideration of appointment to appoint Councilman Edwin to the zoning board of appeals term to coincide with city council term.
I'd like to make the motion to appoint Councilman Edwin to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Martin, second by Councilwoman Mills to appoint Councilman Edwin to the zoning board of appeals, term coincides with city council term. And uh roll call.
Question, is this set for liaison? I mean-
He was the on the on the zoning board of appeals.
Also voting-
Not voting?
Because he has a voting number, that's right.
Can council members, can voting members?
Yes, if they are on video or if they are put on the board, yeah.
Mayor T. Ball was for quite some time and then he um he had
Ken Kukowski-
Take over for him.
Yeah, Ken Kukowski, then Sierra, and and it's actually, if you look it up in the zoning code, uh the state law that pertains to the board of zoning fields, it actually says a house personally.
Should be, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Mallory?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Darling?
Yeah.
Edwin?
I'm seeing.
And Marzy?
Yes.
City manager's report, please.
Just a few items, uh the concession stand is very well, uh blocks done, roads on, uh some of the doors and windows in, I think we're waiting for the double door. I know the plumber was inside this weekend working and I know the electrician stopped by yesterday to take a look uh to see how everything was going. Uh hopefully that'll be done before the softball tournament, so I can answer the question that I keep hearing is the brush pile that happens to be sitting there by the concession stand. Um we have it there, we've left it there for a reason. Um we are waiting for FEMA uh to eventually give us approval and as part of that, they will come and look at the brush. If we haul it away to another location and ship it or whatever else, we're afraid it may jeopardize us getting uh funding to deal with that. Um so we will try to keep it there as long as we can, but once we get word that we can move it, we're disposed of it, trust me, it'll be the bottom. Uh but I know we're already a little impatient, but uh we don't really have much of a choice right now. Uh we bought a new playground set, I believe I told you that last week, uh uh two weeks ago uh for down at Gordon Turner Park where we took out all the old uh equipment, um it was delivered today to the BBW. Um they're going to work on assembling it and then hopefully we can get it up in the next couple of weeks. Uh the rec plan, I know I talked about uh that we would be working with NEMCOG staff uh to get that document done, also we did get approval from DNR to use uh some funding uh that was provided to NEMCOG to assist with the update. Uh this is great because this was on our list of things to get done. However, it sits behind the master plan and zoning in terms of time and resources. Um so again, probably very little of any cost for us to do that, I did get eight quote, to get that done and it was thirty-some thousand dollars, so um again, uh NEMCOG uh came across big for us on that one. Uh master plan and zoning code, Denise and Klein and myself have been working on the zoning districts um for the new uh zoning uh code and also the types of uses that are permitted, uh what's special, what's permitted in each district. Uh that we tried to do with the group that we have meeting with us and it was a mess. And I I think Dave's nodding because he was there, um so I think Denise and I will take care of that and hopefully get that to them soon. Uh NEMCOG is also revising our zoning map. Um I went through the land use map, uh basically I had a map about this big, around that big and I had highlighters and pencils and everything else, so I probably did, probably two days, I did a little bit of coloring and noting and everything else and I got them a copy of that so that they can enter it into the computer and we will have nice brand brand new shiny maps. A couple of good news, uh we do have a bakery that's going in where Mishmash is located at. Uh we have a marijuana dispensary going in between Taco Bell and AFC. I think it's a brilliant idea. There's a temporary fireworks store by uh Family Fair that will be going in, we had to work with them. Um it's going to be in the parking lot, uh chief uh had some concerns about where they were going to put it and I think they finally came to a conclusion, we have another fireworks store that's supposed to be coming into town that we read about on Facebook and it's supposed to be going at Big Boy, so Alex is trying to call Big Boy to say, hey, look, um he didn't put any permits and uh he probably should get it all over the city to make sure that's okay, so um too often times we actually find out stuff on Facebook um and then we have to call people, track them down and say, yes, uh you do have to have a business license, you do have to have permits. Um so Alex is following me up on that, I kinda covered FEMA in the storm. Um once again, we spent about two hundred thousand dollars last year on that. Um again, I do, it's not over, um if we get FEMA money, we're in good shape, we don't. Um I'm gonna probably have to come back to you and we're gonna have to have some serious conversations about how do we get rid of that large pile of brush? I know people are upset, why isn't it moved, why isn't it gone? Well, obviously it's a lot more complicated than just sending our guys over there. Considering we got one small brush chipper and uh five employees to take care of that, it would probably take them eh probably an entire summer into the fall to do that if they work every day, so that means nothing done with cars, nothing done with anywhere else. We'd have to put everybody down there, so we do, one of the contractors that worked on Bald Bailey and those Court Street, um they have one of those giant industrial chippers that's on a semi bed, um and we are talking to them, see if we can convince them to come up and give us a hand on that. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank Council.
If I behind the right center, can could is could that aisle be moved on that premise to hurt the ice rink, the old ice rink in Easton?
Um we've taken it and kinda compacted it as tight as you can there to open it up. But that would take a lot, I mean, by the time we start loading it up and moving it, good thing is, I think in the capital budget, you you will see that I had in there, I have a grapple, just basically like a claw that'll go on in front of our front-end loader, um so that'll help us, because right now, basically, we'd have to have uh two front-end loaders come together and push together, try to push it into one, so one would be pushing into the other and then you have to ask them to use forever. Try to push it into one, so one would be pushing into the other, and then you have to, that has to be a forever to do. Uh, if we get that, when we get that grapple and we'll build order in the first day in July. So if FEMA does approve it, that may be one thing that they'll pay for, but that grapple will, will come in handy a little bit. But I think that tournament's early July.
Yeah, it's like a long way.
Yeah, so keep your fingers crossed and that would be the first one that we'll take care of.
Yeah, I have a question, are we still on schedule for the sidewalk there on, our field?
Oh, that whole, yeah, that's, uh, everything has been signed, approved and, uh, bid out, uh, came in under budget. Uh, I shouldn't say budget, came under projected estimate by the engineer. Uh, so that will be moving forward this summer. Uh, and I know schools are happy about that. And then we do have. Two different projects we're working on with the schools, one's an expansion at the elementary, and the other one is at the middle school. Um, so we are working with them on two projects there, two that I forgot to mention already. We got a lot, a lot of good things going on in terms of development.
Okay, question. I did ask you about Sarah Strander, she was the milkiest, yeah. Milkiest Assistant Treasurer, and she is on the website as the Assistant Treasurer. What happened to that?
Um, I think the question you asked me, and maybe I'm wrong, was that we had Assistant Finance Director, she wasn't Assistant Finance Director. She'd been treasurer, deputy tre, deputy since she was hired on.
So she is the deputy treasurer.
She's the deputy treasurer, she is not the assistant, uh, uh, finance director.
So she helps Casey with the bills that he signs.
She does all the water billing and she does help with payroll. As she was hired, as was Casey when she was in that position.
Do we have a deputy clerk?
Technically not.
No, we, we don't have a deputy clerk, cause we have not brought. Uh, the new, uh, person in to council to get them, the guys through here, but. She is learning, she was here, uh, last week and she was handling the meeting along with Alex.
Okay. Uh, third comments? All right. Okay, I will open all the comments, please stand, say your name. And you have three minutes and just step by, it's a question and answer session, so if, uh. You have any questions you need to be answered, wanna make sure it's submitted to the park.
Uh, good evening, my name's, uh, excuse me, my name's Whit Canell and, uh. Uh, I'm just gonna go ahead and play this, I, I'd like to let, uh, everybody know that, uh, the city council has refused to comment. Or get back to me this case, so.
Thousand dollars, XRP cryptocurrency was stolen. Did what the Sheboygan Police Department refused to do. I traced the stolen funds amongst the blockchain, uncovered a massive laundering network, one still active today. And I built up a physical report that documents every wallet, every monitoring trail, and every frequency factor involved in it. But I didn't call the Sheboygan Police Department, they called me. And when they realized the scale of what I had uncovered, they chose to do nothing. Officer Alder was handed enforcement letters that only needed a signature. He was given emails that could have grossed into suspects' accounts. He ignored it. Detective Sergeant Norman never followed up, and worst of all, Chief Scott Rippon allowed this to happen. He knew I had evidence, he knew I was being ignored. I emailed him directly, I listed ten major failures committed by his department, and instead of stepping in, he stonewalled. He allowed Brenda Temple, his own administrative staff, to threaten. Just asking about my own stolen funds. Chief Ripponberg didn't just refuse to help, he covered for his condo, he buried my complaints. He allowed blatant criminal negligence to flourish under his watch. Let me share one direct quote. You're tracking your funds better than I am able to, Officer Brett Alder, that's what he told me. After failing to submit the case to finance, because he couldn't figure out how to log into his own. So I Googled the fix for a night. Meanwhile, suspect was laundering stolen funds for real time, and Chief Ripponberg vanished. I followed up, I wrote a demand letter. I detailed ten failures and thirty-eight causes of action. His response, silence. And just so the public knows, it took at least two full months to even provide me with a case number. If the chief of police refuses to hold his own officer's account, he's not just negligent, he's complicit. Jesse, because of that, that failure of leadership.
My name's Jesse Mulder. And, uh, Wade is my neighbor and friend, and I've been, uh, helping him along. With his, uh, his business and other things. And, um, also, um. You promised me that you were gonna get some and cleaning thitches out, you haven't done it yet.
Trying to throw it out of the council, council rooms.
My name is Ross Marble, I'm with North Bailey Street. I would like to commend the CCE dispatch. Sheboygan City Police Department, Sheboygan County Sheriff, Michigan State Police. Negotiated from a team, Sheboygan Fire Department and about three other agencies. That, for their, their professionalism they showed this past Thursday. During the unfolding of four potentially dangerous events. Two of them occurred in the city and two of them in South County Sheboygan. Uh, they prevented bad situations from becoming much worse. This is why we need training and equipment, they did a wonderful job. And I wanted to thank all of the agencies that were involved, about three agencies, I don't even know what they are. Thank you.
Any other comments?
First of all, I just wanted to, um, thank Mary Darling for the last meeting I was at. She was the only one that came up and has said how, um, she's here to represent people of this community. By, by letting you know that property taxes affect people. Affect them so much that they can lose their homes if they do not pay them. That is a big deal. A lot of senior citizens, a lot of young people. Are losing their homes because property taxes are going up and up and up, and they can't afford them. So we do have a, one thing good is, we have a lady, Carla Wagner, who has been working on Ask My Tax for five years. Didn't make it on the ballot last time, but we're working on it to get it on the ballot this time, Ask My Tax. I have brochures, we have, um, petitions that. We would like to get this on the ballot to give people the opportunity to vote to whether or not. Property taxes should be held to our property. We pay our homes, we don't pay our property taxes. Pardon me?
Just direct the ballots to council.
Okay, if we pay, pay our homes, our homes could be paid off, but if we don't pay our property taxes, we can lose them. So, I would really hope that you, you know, that people will consider this and, um, take the information. One other thing too is, um, Inverness Township, just waiting to, uh, be able to meet with the city about our sewer. I don't know if that meeting happened, I know I can't get an answer right now, but as far as I know, it hasn't. Three years been asking for this meeting to happen, so if it doesn't happen, I hope it happens soon.
My name is Mary Darling, um, it was taken off the agenda. Where council can speak to you, the, um, people we represent. So I have to be here as a public citizen in order to speak to you. Um, that's against my First Amendment right. And I just would like to remind. The council of the ultimate take. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution. Of the United States and the Constitution of this state. And that I will discharge the duties of council members. Of the city of the Sheboygan to the best of my abilities. I have been censored for voicing my opinion. Um, for things I print, which I do proud of. And this will prevent me from running for office in the future unless they reverse this. One other thing I'd like to read. Democracy. Political power is vested in people. Where citizens have the power to participate in decision-making. Um, that just doesn't happen here. Citizens, citizens elect representatives to make decisions on their behalf. Um, another thing I don't see this council doing. They should represent the people who elected them, because that's why they were elected. We should be able to trust our elected officials. Be treated with respect and dignity and listen to them. That is what I was elected to do, and that is what I will continue to do. No matter what anybody says, I am for the people of Sheboygan.
Any other public comments? Okay, I will close this session of public comments. Do we have any committee updates? Come on, ready to make this. Two weeks.
The, uh, the, uh, our manager. Mentioned today that, uh. We're the table, I could be wrong. Said it was, and I forgot. Uh, they're gonna relay, uh, check, um, a little black. To see what page, um, USDA, USDA, and they're gonna, uh. Our case is gonna have to walk and. To see it. There, there's some other, uh, places in the colony that they are also gonna look at. But, uh, hey, Alan, he didn't say at time, but it's on the schedule, they're gonna check to see what's gonna be. Uh, he made a reference to Lincoln, for the, for the urine. But that goes further than that, so I hope they do, I think.
Well, me, um, I think it was Nate, I was for the city. Uh, he didn't go down at my request to look at everything from the river, um, all the way out to Lincoln, all to, uh. Like, we're, uh, we're buying, so we're buying there. Uh, so we did, uh, ran up a map, and then we also made it a good job to circle in areas of concern. And that was given to USDA, and now they're using that as the basis to go research. Uh, and look at what areas there are some issues with, so, that's good to hear that.
Uh, Charles, the, the DVA, they didn't make me, but Festival Square. Entry, if you guys have any, so I left all the shirts, really, uh, really nice, and I think it was a good investment. And, uh, there's nothing else than the other committees.
So we're the feels to meet the next Wednesday.
All right. All right, eating is a drink.